Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, October 17th, meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is the Accounts Payable docket. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have recognition of citizens and youths and business. Commissioner Dieter, you were...
Sure, the citizen of the month, Wendell Johnson, could not make it tonight, so...
Do I want to get that closer to you? I was just going to say drop that down so people can hear you better. I'm sorry.
What did she say? Okay.
Oh, so you could...
He's not here. We will proceed to the Youth of the Month. Granted, we are in October, but this was updated and got confused with paperwork, but the Youth of the Month is Braylon Johnson. So you and whoever you're with can step up to the podium.
Braylon Williams?
Is it Williams or Johnson?
William.
Okay. Well, there was a mistake on the plaque, so we will fix that. So this young man, right there, that's cool, right there by that podium, is an Adams student, an outstanding football player, the athletic director, also stated he's a great student and a role model for everybody at Adams. You've probably seen his name in the paper, doing good things this year for Adams. Unfortunately, it wasn't a good year for Adams football, but he had a unique experience, learning a lot of stuff, staying in good physical condition, learning how to work with teammates, learning how to be smarter than the team playing against you. So with that, I commend you on that. We will get that fixed. I apologize for that, so there was an error. The trophy place, so we will get that and we'll bring it to school for you. So, young lady, would you like to say anything about him?
I'm just very proud of him, of who he is as a kid and person, and he's a great athlete too, so it's my son. I just love him to death, so very proud, mom.
As you well should be.
And your next step after Adams High School will be where?
That hasn't really been decided yet.
Okay. Well, good. Well, I'm sure you're going to do very well with all that.
You're at Adams High School?
Yeah.
We've come up here, we can take a photo, and then we'll get you the correct plaque We proceed to the Youth of the Month for September is Ms. Ari Young. A LaSalle student was nominated by Ms. Piggy and other people that described you as a very energetic student, a role model. It's an honor for them to have you at school and, again, be the role model that everybody looks up to, so we appreciate that. We hope... Where do you plan on going after LaSalle? Step to your right.
Who?
Step to your right. Step to your right. Keep going, keep going, keep going. There you go.
Washington.
Okay. That's great. Mom?
And who are you?
I just want to congratulate Ari because she's been a very good student since she's been in kindergarten, and she's strived to do the best, and I'm just very proud of her, and I hope she continue. She's a basketball player, so that's why she picked Washington.
Is she better than you?
Yeah, she is.
Okay.
So I just want her to continue to keep being her best and, you know, I'm happy for her.
Okay.
Good student and a good athlete, and Washington will be fortunate to have her.
Thank you.
Washington has a good program. Young man, would you like to speak about her?
Yeah, this is my sister. I'm so proud of her. She's came such a long way. Used to get bad grades, now she's getting good grades, now she's being... I'm just so happy. I just might cry, man. I just want to thank you guys for, you know...
No problem.
The city, this love, it shows a lot, and we love it. We appreciate you guys.
Okay. Thank you. Come up here for a photo, and this will be on our Facebook page. Right there on Washington, right on the other.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thank you, guys. Business of the Month for September, Nizgatsky Plumbing. Nizgatsky Plumbing has been in the community over 100 years. Started out on a house on Laporte Avenue with a small garage and a storage area in the backyard. The business slowly grew through the 20s and 30s. Carl?
I don't remember the 20s and 30s.
The two brothers, Clem and Chester, had his tonsil removed, and he passed away soon after the disease. Through the 40s, the business grew, located a plumbing shop on Euclid, not far from Laporte Avenue location. The building originally had been a milk dairy called Producers Daily. That's true. Business later moved to Alex's home at 1949 Berkeley. Really? That's cool, on the northwest side. And during that time, it expanded, expanded to where it is just a phenomenal business now. I know firsthand of the stuff they do, from David and now to Grant and everybody else in between. It's been a family business, which is very, very cool to have that going on for decades and decades and decades. So, thank you, guys, very much. Hopefully, they spell this correctly. Hopefully, come to you, but Carl, anything else about Nizgatsky Plumbing?
Well, you've been a fixture on the west side.
Yeah, yeah, that's for sure.
Cheap joke there. But no, really, I was speaking to your mom, I think...
Yeah.
...the other day, and as Derek said, I didn't realize that the company was over 100 years old. That's...
Yeah, yeah. It's 2022.
That is an achievement.
Hundred years. Yeah, yeah. I'm fourth generation, so no pressure or nothing, but...
Got to keep that going.
Yeah, it's an honor to have the opportunity, obviously, to be able to take over a business with such longstanding history, but it feels good to be able to... Yeah, I feel like I'm contributing to the community, you know, legitimately. So, happy to be in the position I am in, and I know we do a lot of works for the South Bend Water Works, been doing that for a long time, and so we plan to keep on doing that and keeping everybody's drains running and water flowing.
And keeping people employed.
Pretty good baseball player in his time, too, there.
Oh.
Mr. Left... Yeah, I went to Washington High School, too, so it's good to see what we got soon.
Left-handed batter.
Yeah.
But, yeah, again, it's just a good opportunity. The days of family businesses in the area is far and few between. Everybody has left, it's online. The service, I know specifically from... We had a leak that the city said they couldn't do anything about it, and you guys came out and dug down about four feet and fixed it, so that was a very good job of that. So, your reputation from generation to generation to generation to now his generation is well-received in the community, so we thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're done with those fellows, President Baxmeyer.
Thank you. Commissioner Dieter. Next are bills approved by the county council. There's a significant number of them. They were all passed 9-0. I'd like to see us make a motion to approve the whole list of them, rather than having to read each one individually.
Did you say the whole list?
The whole list. Do we have a motion to approve all the bills that were sent to us by the county council?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, Resolution R-21-C-2023, approval to purchase property at 14390 Douglas Road in Mishawaka.
Terry O'Brien, economic development planner, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. My office is on the 11th floor. Resolution 21 will authorize the Board of Commissioners to purchase the property on Larison Road. The funding was recently approved by the St. Joe County Redevelopment Commission. The land will be used to facilitate future development within the IEC. The cost to purchase this parcel was $301,350. For the record, I just wanted to point out that the purchase price was determined by the average of two appraisals. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Terry, the purpose of purchasing this property, could you just recap for everybody?
Sure, for future development within the IEC.
We've had a request for copies of the appraisals. Those are public records.
Correct.
And we will provide those to the people who asked for it. Some question as to how the price was arrived at.
Understand. Be happy to provide them to you, so you can provide them to them.
Any other questions or comments for Terry this evening? If not, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve this Resolution R-21-C-2023.
Second. Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, is Resolution R-22-C-2023, a resolution for the approval to purchase property at 14390 Douglas Road in Mishawaka.
Terry O'Brien, economic development planner. Resolution 22 will authorize the South Bend County Board of Commissioners to purchase 14390 Douglas Road. The funding also came from the St. Joe County Redevelopment Commission. The land will be used to facilitate future roadway improvement from the Mishawaka city limits along Douglas Road to Capitol Avenue. The cost to purchase this property was $151,650, and, again, the same appraisal process was used. The price was determined by the average of two appraisals, and happy to provide you and that individual a copy of those appraisals.
Yes, we would want copies of both property, the appraisals for both properties. If there are no questions, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve this Resolution R-22-C-2023.
Second. Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is Resolution R-22-C-2023, the intent to conduct a commissioner's sale, to sell tax sale certificates for properties that are severely delinquent in payment of property taxes.
Good evening. Morella Carbona, property tax supervisor in the auditor's office.
Could you pull the mic?
Morella Carbona.
Thank you.
Property tax supervisor in the auditor's office, second floor, county city building.
And my name is Jessica Garcia. I'm the senior property tax specialist for the auditor's office.
The reason we are here today is to ask the commissioners to pass the resolution so that we can conduct our 2023 certificate tax sale. The 2023 certificate tax sale consists of properties that were left over from our normal tax sale that we had this past September. These properties did not sell. As you may know, the commissioners hold the certificates. We would like to offer them in our commissioner's certificate sale. We plan to have that in February. So with that being said, again, we're here to ask that you pass the resolution to approve the 2023 certificate sale, and if you have any questions, just let us know.
How many properties?
414, I believe.
Are they occupied or unoccupied?
They could be occupied, they could be unoccupied. We don't know.
You don't know, one way or the other?
I'm sorry?
You don't know one way or the other if they're...
We do, we do not, no.
Okay. So if they're sold and they're occupied, what do you do?
If they're sold and occupied? So we sell these properties. There's still a redemption period, so the homeowner could come forward and redeem the properties.
Okay, so if somebody's renting a home that's on that sale, it's sold, I would assume that person's going to have to leave, or...
They're going to receive notice from the tax sale buyer that the property is sold on the commissioner's sale.
Okay. And you don't have a barometer of are most vacant or most occupied?
I'm going to say a lot of them, most of them are vacant properties.
70%?
It's hard to say.
Yeah, the majority of the properties are offered up, are vacant lots.
For those that aren't vacant, you mentioned the redemption period. How long is the redemption period?
120 days.
Okay, and the money from all the sale of those goes to where?
Kathy?
I can answer it if you want.
I'm not sure, yeah.
It has to stay in an account until the redemption period is passed, and then somebody has to do a lot of accounting and make sure that we have the money figured out, and then it goes back into the general fund typically.
Thank you. Did you get that right, Kathy?
Yeah, Kathy Gregorich is the settlement specialist, so she'd be the best to answer that question.
Yeah, Kathy Gregorich, office manager, settlement specialist for the auditor's office. We keep it, and then if it's redeemed, of course, then that money is going to be paid out...
To the tax sale buyer.
To the tax sale buyer, and if it's not redeemed, then these, first of all, these properties are listed at a very reduced price, so we're not collecting very much money compared to the regular tax sale that we had in the fall.
I understand, but if we're collecting money, I'd like to know, where does it go?
Okay. You can answer that one. With, if it doesn't get redeemed, then...
I don't know where that money's going.
Okay. If it doesn't get redeemed, then the purchaser gets to go forward and have the deed transferred to their name. We take that money and make sure the taxes are paid or remove the taxes, so the majority of the money is going to go to pay the taxes on the tax bill. A lot of it's just going to be written off, because what we're going to collect at this sale won't be enough to pay the past due taxes.
Okay. So if you have leftover money, where would that go?
We don't have leftover money.
The money that goes into it, so let's say there's a $5,000 tax bill, they pay $3,000 for the property, the $3,000 goes towards the tax, but the taxes just go into the general fund.
So you're saying this is a wash?
We're not going to recoup all of the tax amount typically, but the cash that comes in just goes to the general fund like tax collections do.
I'm sorry.
But is there, like, 62.77, is there a fund, or where does that exactly goes into? General fund.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question, I guess. So if we collect money, that money is going to be applied to the past due taxes.
Right.
They're still not going to all be paid. The rest of it's going to be just written off, but the amount that we did receive, then, will go through the regular settlement process, where that money at the, in December, December and June is when we run settlement, and then that money is by taxing unit. So that money is going to be applied and show up on the reports, so if it was in Penn Township, it's going to be on the Penn Township report. Those taxes are going to be distributed between all of those taxing units for that Penn Township. It's going to be the library, school, airport, county. It's going to be split between all of the, just like regular taxes being paid.
Okay. What, a majority of these 400-plus, are they in the city of South Bend, or they in...
I believe they are mostly in the city of South Bend. She's going to just double-check real quick.
Mr. Mitch, do you know the answer to that one?
Most of them are in South Bend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, like I said, most of them are vacant lots.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have no further questions at this time, Mr. Baxmeyer.
Thank you. Thanks for...
Thank you.
...clarification. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R-23-C-2023?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval of the MetLife contract slash agreement.
And I think Bob is on line? Maybe Troy, Bob? Bob was, I saw him. There he is, Bob Frick, I see him.
There he is.
We'll allow you to unmute. Hold on, Bob.
I think it, I think it went through.
It did.
Who's it?
That's Bob Frick from Gallagher.
Oh, Bob Frick.
Good evening. You guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Fantastic. Robert Frick, KJ Gallagher, located at 15615 State Road 23, Granger, Indiana. Yes, we've been looking at change in the group term life, voluntary life and retiree life, from Napco, who has been in place for a number of years. Not necessarily because of pricing. The pricing for MetLife is slightly less. However, we've had a really hard time with administration getting accurate billing, getting accurate enrollment. MetLife also handles our FMLA, our short-term and long-term disability and voluntary benefits. We think that the administration is going to be much easier by making this switch, and that, that's the majority of the reason that we're advocating or recommending this switch.
I understand that you looked at several different alternatives. MetLife, the existing...
We did do, you know, we did a limited marketing effort to two or three carriers, but really wanted to work with someone that was already in place at St. Joseph County, which MetLife fit that bill. So that, that's the recommendation, to make the HR department a little bit more streamlined and allow them to operate with the resources that they have.
Any other questions or comments?
We've had this for a while, right?
We've had MetLife for a while for other things.
That's what I thought, too. Yeah, MetLife, okay.
There being no further comments or questions, do we have a motion to approve the MetLife contract agreement?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I also want to note that Courtney Mullins, our HR finance director, worked with them on this.
Right.
Appreciate her efforts as well. Next item on the agenda is under the Health Department, approval of a contract with the Howard Park Event Center for Health First Indiana Event. It's going to be held a week from yesterday, I believe.
Yes, this is Amy Rupe.
There's Amy.
Hi, it's Amy Rupe, administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the 8th and 9th floor, and Howard Park is donating the space to us for our event on Monday, however, they still do require that a contract be signed.
Can you just, for the record, talk a little bit about the event before we vote on this?
Oh, certainly. The event is open to the public, to any community member that is interested in applying for a grant opportunity that we have through the Health First Indiana Fund that will be coming in January of 2024. We do ask that participants pre-register by going to the Eventbrite link that we have listed on our webpage, and it will be from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. while we go through the process for the community partners to apply for the funding.
Well, there is no charge for this, and we appreciate Howard Park working with the Department of Health to host this event. Any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the contract with Howard Park Events Center?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good evening.
Good evening. Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th, 11th floor. I'm here to discuss the bid award for the St. Joe County Highway capital improvement projects, the New Carlisle Garage, North Liberty Garage, and Woodland Garage. We received bids a couple of weeks ago. Our consultant, DLZ, has reviewed those bids, and we have reviewed the recommendation, and we're ready to make a recommendation to the board. We received three bids, bids from three different companies, three different contractors on this project. There's a bid tab that's on the back. Sorry for the size of the font. A little difficult to read, but with all that said, we, after reviewing everything, we recommend that our Yoder Construction be awarded the construction contract for all projects for a total of $3,627, 700, six, three, let me say that again, $3,627...
Any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the contract with Howard Park Events Center?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the Infrastructure Planning and Growth Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good evening. Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the seventh and 11th floor. I'm here to discuss the bid award for the St. Joe County Highway Capstone Improvement Projects, the New Carlisle Garage, North Liberty Garage, and Woodland Garage. We received bids a couple weeks ago. Our consultant DLZ has reviewed those bids, and we have reviewed the recommendation, and we're ready to make a recommendation to the board. We received three bids, bids from three different companies, three different contractors on this project. There's a bid tab that's on the back, sorry for the size of the font, a little difficult to read. But with all that said, we, after reviewing everything, we recommend that our Yoder Construction be awarded the construction contract for all projects for a total of $3,627,768, which is the base bid, and it includes the allowances and all the three alternates that were bid. All these bids that came, this bid itself was under the original opinion of construction cost estimates, and so we have money that's, it's under the money that came in through the bond to fund it, which is good news. So we recommend that the board approve this, and we can start preparing the contracts, so.
Scott, it's our understanding that it was significantly under the?
Yes.
Amount?
Yes, about, I mean, to the tune of, if I recall, it was about half a million under the estimate. So, so that, that's very good, especially in the bidding climate we're, we have today, so.
And you had suggested that we support the, our Yoder Construction?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Once work starts, you have a completion, estimated completion date?
Uh, we're looking for, given our highway oper, since we can't shut the garages down, we're looking for fall of next year, late summer, fall of next year to be completed. They, they'll be able to start this year, but with, we don't want them out in the garages during winter operations, so.
I'm glad we're moving ahead with those improvements.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve the contracts for the New Carlisle Garage, North Liberty Garage, and Woodland Garage with our Yoder Construction?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Under old business, we're going to leave the proposal for the monthly Title IVD consulting services on the table. We delayed that a couple weeks ago, we're still working out some of the details on that. Having said that, we're ready to move on to public comments.
I have some questions about the park that you're wanting to put up, and you don't have, obviously don't have to answer them, but I just wanna put it out there. I love parks, I have no problem with parks, in fact, in my immediate area, in yours, we have like nine parks, which I could name them if you want, but I won't, won't do that right now because it's a waste of time. When you had an interview with Joe Ditz, you said that you would pay for this park with private donations. Now you wanna take what was the remainder of money that was donated for the Portage Manor residents and use that for the park? That doesn't make sense to me. And same with the, the auction, I haven't heard anything about when that auction's gonna be, and I know people are, are just wondering, but I heard that, that the money that you make from that, you want to use towards the park as well. There are places in St. Joe County, like Clubhouse, where some of the residents would go, and there are so few resources for these people, people with severe mental illness, and I think that that money really should go someplace like that, they could really use that money as opposed to it going to your park. I applaud you for wanting to put a park in, go for it, love it, but don't use county funds for it when you said you weren't going to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Cornelius Barnes, I live at 21379 Mayh's Drive, South Bend, Indiana. And I come to the commission tonight just to ask one question. Will the property located at 3016 Portage Ave., South Bend, Indiana, 46628, formerly known as Portage Minor, be used to house illegal aliens or migrants? I just have a question.
No answer, so that pretty much, go ahead.
We have a privilege of the floor forum, so people who have questions like that can put their question down, we'll be happy to get the information from you right after the meeting and make sure that you get an answer.
Okay, well, I have submitted two forms online asking this question, and I haven't been given an answer. On the 13th, I did it twice, I submitted two forms, one on 13, a couple of days earlier, I submitted, I haven't gotten an answer. And I also came into the office and asked the same question.
Not to make excuses, but we do have a new administrative assistant. He was not here on the 13th and hasn't been for a few days, so we will, I will get with you right after the meeting.
Okay, then.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question too? The Portage Manor, if it's still up, is it still up for auction, or has it been sold?
Well, again, we usually, we don't respond to public comments because we don't want it to be a?
Okay, I understand that.
A debate, if you will. So I'd be happy to, again, get you information regarding that as well.
Okay, thank you.
So please don't leave right after the meeting, give me just a second to get down there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I see Mr. Francis has his hand up. I'm sorry, one second, Steve, before we go, did you wanna say something? I forgot to ask if there was anybody else in the audience.
Hello, Julie Calhoun, 51517, Haberhill Court. I just wanna support what Jenny was saying about the money in the park and just make it vocal about what's gonna happen, and also about the auction. You can't answer us, but how are we supposed to find out? When will you tell us?
It will be on an agenda.
Okay, on the commissioner's agenda or the council?
Commissioners first.
Okay. And while I'm up here, this is totally off about anything here tonight, but is there, I would like, I don't know if it comes before the council or the commissioner, but when people have, when they're observing when somebody dies and they release the helium balloons, I think that is a waste. I think there should be an ordinance on that, I don't know how to go about doing that. Are there, there has to, I haven't researched and I just, I'm off topic right now, but I wish there was an ordinance, I don't know if it would be for the city or the counts, the county of having a ban on the helium balloons. So how would I go about to get that, how does that work?
We will fill out a form right after the meeting.
Okay.
And get your answer. I have an idea, but I wanna make sure I'm telling you the right thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Now, sorry, Steve, we will move to Steve Francis, who has his hand raised.
Yes, hello, no problem, thanks for taking comments. I wanna thank you for, I have a comment on the appraisals and the, the property purchased out on Larison Road. I thank you for, for maybe getting those appraisals, I don't know why they weren't included in the packet, because the appraisal in the packet, or the valuation, is $169,000, I believe, and I just have a real question about $300,000 of our tax monies being spent on property that should be appraised as agricultural, that's how it's sown, and last I looked, 10 acres agricultural would not be $25,000, $30,000 an acre, so I have a, eagerly await those appraisals. I also feel like this is gonna happen a lot out there as property values appraise, we have speculators coming in who want to take advantage of the situation, and just keep an eye on that. I appreciate you're being concerned about county spending. I'm not sure why you had to approve that without seeing the appraisals, because I don't think you've seen them, but let's go ahead and look at that. Also, coming down the pipe is a vast expansion of the economic development area out there to more than 12 square miles that will come your way. It was approved today at the APC or passed on. There's only really one opportunity for the public to weigh in, and that's the night it will be approved by the council on November 14th, and it's wholly inadequate given, some of you have expressed an interest in keeping that contained and not having vast expansion of the IEC. So I would alert you to that, and when it comes before you, there's nothing that prohibits you from having a public hearing on important matters, by the way, so I think that you could have a public hearing even though you're not required to. So it's going to be a vast expansion of the EDA, more industrial zone out there, and I think that it betrays what we were promised when the property was first, or the area was first designated, the IEC. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else online wish to make, offer a comment? Seeing none, do we have a motion to recess?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
We are recessed.
Recording stopped.